Thank you. I know. Yeah, I hope she's back soon. All right. Good evening, everybody. You ready? This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood. Welcome. This is May 16th, 2023, and we're going to have our clerk take the role.
Councilmember DeWillis?
Here.
Councilmember Duvernay?
Here.
Councilmember Karat?
Present.
And Mary Alinsky?
Here. Thank you. Please stand to join me in the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, up next is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Biggest piece of news is Scotty Douglas is finally here, our new manager. Welcome, Scotty. This is this is day two for Scotty, and it probably feels like, you know, day 22, I'm sure, but we really have been waiting a long time to get you here and appreciate appreciate you choosing Cottonwood.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's definitely an honor to be here. It's it was a process, obviously, and I'm very honored to be part of this new community, and I've been looking to be here for a long time, so now I'm here.
Great.
And I'm excited.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do we have anything to share? No? Okay, Mr. Douglas, take it away.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. There's so there's a few things. I have a long list of things, but what I think I'm going to do is I'm going to make some of these available just on our website, be on the lookout on Facebook and other social media outlets that we have here that that we're going to be sharing some of this information. But I'm going to share some of the highlights. But first, I'd like to start tonight with recognizing National Police Week. I'm not sure if any of you are aware, but this is National Police Week, and in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And tonight, I would like to recognize the members of the Cottonwood Police Department, including all of those that support the job that they do day in and day out to keep our community safe through personal sacrifice and ultimate ultimate service to our community. I was one of them. I did a little bit of that as well, including dispatch. And I'd like to ask Commander Braxton to come up and just say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Douglas, welcome. Yeah, thank you for the recognition, and this week is always a little bit bittersweet because we know what the week means. We know that there are countless men and women around the country that have given their lives and the ultimate sacrifice for the greater good. But one of the things that brings comfort and solace to the men and women that work in the profession is knowing that, by and large, we've got a nation of support and people that recognize the good deeds and the efforts that we make to make the world a better place. And so there's really not a day or week that goes by that we're not reminded of that support that we receive from the community. As recently as yesterday, we were called to one of our area businesses to receive a box of cupcakes, which sometimes that's not a good thing, depending on where you're at in your physical journey. But nonetheless, the gesture means a lot, and it doesn't go unnoticed. So on behalf of the men and women of the City of Cottonwood, Cottonwood Police Department, we thank you for the recognition, and thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you, Commander.
Okay, thank you. And there are just a few more that... Thank you. I get so excited to talk that I just wanted to start talking. Okay, so the next thing that I'd just like to say, there's a few items of interest I just wanted to call attention to. This is a reminder on the Cottonwood Community Awareness Group. The public's invited to attend meetings of the Cottonwood Community Awareness Group. That's hosted by Councilmember Jackie Naren. These meetings will help you connect connect you and our citizens to the government process, and the topics for each meeting will vary. The next registration or no registration's necessary, and meetings occur every fourth Tuesday at 4:00 PM. And the next one's going to be Tuesday, May 23rd, at the Cottonwood Public Library. So we welcome all of you and members of the community to come out and participate in that. I will be there. You can ask me questions, and I'll answer them to the best that I can, but I would really look forward to getting to know the community. The next is representatives from the City of Cottonwood's Finance Department's going to hold a budget town hall on Wednesday, May 31st, from 5:30 to 6:30 PM in the City Council chamber, so we're just right here. And it's we're going to be explaining the city's budget process and answer any questions regarding the city's proposed 2324 fiscal year budget. And for additional information regarding that, you can connect with Kirsten Lennon, Finance Services Director, 928-340-2712. And then the last one is folks of all ages are invited to join a community bike ride with Mary Alinsky on Saturday, May 20th, starting at 9:00 AM. And me too. I'm gonna bring my bike out there, do a little bicycling, and meet at the youth ballfield parking lot at Riverfront Park, and enjoy a scenic bike ride through Dead Horse Ranch State Park. Participants will enjoy a free meal at the end of the ride catered by Old Crow Food Truck. If you have any questions, you can email Jen Mayberry at jen.mabery@yavapieaz.gov. So thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Okay, let's move on then to call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion or action, and comments are limited to a three-minute time period. So we have a handful of folks here that would like to speak to us this evening. Again, we're going to limit you to three minutes. We ask that you address council specifically and not the public behind you, and I'll queue you up in the order that I receive these so that we can get through this as efficiently as possible and get on with our our business. So first up is Jason Spencer, and you will be followed by Sharon Bonney. Good evening.
Yes, Council. First of all, I want to thank the City of Cottonwood for receiving me in a pursuit which really has a lot to do with being a good father and getting my daughter back. And the main point I wanted to make tonight was I've been affected by the shootings that have happened in the United States, in Uvalde, in Aurora, and I would like to just propose the possibility of you guys considering the solution of technology where a drone that could monitor public areas with a with a camera could spot a shooter or somebody that's a threat to our family before they're able to open fire. And this is just an observation that I've made that has to do with public safety, because I think that technology is at the point where we could prevent this from ever happening in the city where I really appreciate life, and I've seen families, and I've seen people really happy. And I just wanted to make that point that I observe things like that. And if you guys are interested in more information of how that works, I think it's completely possible to prevent any type of situation like that happening, because it seems ridiculous to me that it happened in other cities, knowing what I know about our possibilities to spot something like that and end it in a way that we disable a threat before one of our loved ones or somebody is taken out, in a way that the whole country grieves, and they send thoughts and prayers. So that's the point I wanted to make. Right now, I'm living over by the CVS, and I just wanted to thank you guys because the city's one of the coolest cities I've found on my journey to look for happiness. And that's an observation I just wanted to bring before the council.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Appreciate it. Sharon Bonney, you're next, and you'll be followed by George Lee.
Hi, good evening. The residents of Cottonwood and its surrounding towns have voices. The regular city council meetings have a place for our voices. I appreciate our local government, a democratic republic. The residents get the opportunity to speak publicly about whatsoever things are true, honest, pure, lovely, of good rapport, if there be any virtue, and if there be any praise, we get to speak on those things. If the ACLU one day decided to protect women and thereby denounce men who appropriate our female gender in drag shows with children present, dressing like their imagined hypersexualized stereotypical version of us, moving their hips like they think we move them, would you, city council members and mayor, follow along and not allow drag shows anymore in your public buildings? I think you would follow along. You have shown you will do whatever the ACLU promotes at the time. What do you believe, city council members and mayor? The ACLU can change their tune any day and push on you any belief they choose. Today, it's protect and promote female appropriation at all costs, at the cost of biological women, at the cost of childhood innocence. Tomorrow, they may push another belief on you. What do you believe to be true, honest, just, pure, lovely, of good rapport, worthy of praise? Mother's Day was two days ago. Happy Mother's Day to all biological women. Happy Mother's Day to my birth mother, who carried me to term. Only a real woman can do that, not a man dressing up and identifying as. Children need to know that and not be led into confusion about what it means to be a woman. Happy Mother's Day to my mother, who raised me with the care and love only a biological woman can show a child. In conclusion, I appreciate our being able to speak at these meetings. I ask what the city council members believe to be true and pure concerning children at events where men appropriate the female gender, and happy Mother's Day to biological women. Thank you for listening.
George Lee, you're up next. You'll be followed by Michael Nocido.
Thank you. First of all, I'm here to support you, Mayor, and this council. I think that the behavior that you have been subjected to by certain people here in this community is impolite at best, bullying at worst. And I think that it's something that they profess to be related to an event that took place a month ago, the drag show, and yet here they are back, council meeting after council meeting, continuing to try to pressure you to change to accord with their beliefs. That this same group is here is disturbing, week after meeting after meeting. What is more disturbing is that this isn't really just a local phenomenon. This is something that's happening nationally. It's a coordinated effort between fundamentalist groups, white nationalist groups, far-right groups, that's being spearheaded now by the Republican Party, who where they can control the government, passes laws that can discriminate against people that they disapprove of. Why? They claim to support family values. They claim to support women. But I think it's their version of family values and their version of what a woman is. They want to protect children from being groomed. They want to protect children from being exposed to adult content. I support family values. I support the right of people to have peace within their own lives without feeling threatened physically or verbally, because they are somewhat different and not in accordance with someone else's ideas of purity or morality. They justify demonizing people who are different because their interpretation of the Bible demands it. There are lots of different ways to interpret the Bible. That's not the Bible that I read. Despite the twisting of history that's done by the far right, this nation was not founded as a theocracy based on a very narrow Christian viewpoint. In fact, the United States was based on tolerance in reaction to governments trying to impose religious beliefs of particular groups.
Mr. Nocido, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Brittany K. Walsh.
Thank you. I'm gonna adjust a little bit. Good evening. How are you? Welcome, sir. Glad to have you on board. Never mind. My name is Michael Nocido, and I'm one of those troublemakers that has petitioned the council since February 7th, and every council meeting since, I wasn't here on the 18th because I was on vacation, and here we are again, requesting that the council follow their own laws, which in City Code 2.08.110 states in part, except the items are put on the agenda except when specifically requested by two or more council members. Otherwise, the mayor, clerk, and city manager controls that. So we're just again asking you to agendize this item to discuss an age restriction on drag and all adult entertainment events, and do it openly, open discussion, just like we've always said. This is not about LGBTQ X, Y, and Z. It's not about anybody's choice in the bedroom. We've never said that. The only person that's ever called us hateful or violent is Mr. Mayor in the newspaper. So we're peaceful people. We just want to protect children. We, in Cottonwood, in 2021, got the city council to pass a resolution to a Bill of Rights Sanctuary City. And in doing so, we became an example for at least two counties, Elko County and Larkin County in Nevada. Fourteen days after our resolution, 3094 was passed and approved, they pass a similar resolution. So Cottonwood is looked at and followed sometimes in not just the local community, or the county, or the state, but countrywide, they're watching us. We watch other people, and they watch us. They plagiarize most of our resolution, but that's okay, because that's what cities do. One of the comments by one of the Board of the Directors, excuse me, Commissioner, Nevada, Elko County Commissioner Rex Steniger said, "I hope this catches on in talking about a Bill of Rights Sanctuary City. The example of taking a strong stand to what is right is how national movements begin. I hope we begin a national movement with an age restriction on adult entertainment." Thank you.
Brittany K. Walsh, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Shanna Martin.
Good evening. I was born and raised in Cottonwood. My father, he poured that basketball court across the way. I love this town, and I was very saddened to move back and realize that there were discussions of drag bans here. I got a law degree when I moved away, so I can tell you all a little bit about the constitutionality of such a drag ban. This is expressive conduct. How people dress, these performances, putting on costumes, they are protected by not only the Arizona Constitution, but the United States Constitution. The money that it would take to defend such a ban in court would be tens, if not hundreds of thousands, and potentially a million dollars if it went to the Supreme Court. I can think of 20, 30, 40, hundreds of ways we could spend that money in our community that would be better than fighting a ban we knew upfront was unconstitutional. The public discourse around drag shows, around trans people, it's simply not based in reality. It's not backed by any study or any science, and it does our community no good to create these divisions. Many of these bans claim to protect children. They do not. And it is unfortunate that people are using victims of rape, incest, and other wild allegations, again, that do not track with drag shows, with trans folks. It's unfortunate that people use people, children who have been harmed, as tokens instead of doing anything for real victims. That money could be better spent for actual victims. There's no legitimate government interest in such a ban, again, making it not constitutional to pass such a thing. I ask you, please remember, we are protected by the United States Constitution, by the Arizona Constitution. No such ban would hold constitutional muster. Thank you.
Shanna Martin, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Donna O'Daniel.
I am embarrassed that we are here again talking about this, and I'm also impressed that you have been able to keep a straight face and calm demeanor through some of the ridiculous things that have been said in this room. We have heard our neighbors accuse drag performers of being pedophiles and groomers while demanding that the city protect our children, my children, from them. It is obvious these words are spoken with malice and judgment, though they claim to align themselves with God's love, grace, and light. Given the known pedophilia and grooming that has taken place in many churches and congregations across time and all over the world, including our own town just a couple years ago, perhaps we should make churches 18 and up. My daughter and her dance troupe, children ages five to 16, will be doing a live performance in a couple of weeks, and many of the routines include these children doing the splits onstage in front of adults and their peers. We have heard here how lewd the splits are. Do you plan on putting an end to that performance? Have you been to a Mingus football game recently? Cheerleaders in miniskirts shake their butts, and the boys play football, a game that we know can easily lead to a serious long-term traumatic brain injury that has no cure and has serious mental and physical impairments for the rest of their lives. Are you going to protect the children from that? Where does it end? Or do we only need to protect our children from drag queens? I'm sorry, this is very emotional for me. Prejudice is a preconceived opinion that is not based on reason or actual experience. That is what's being thrust upon performers in these town halls. I have not heard one actual attendee of the all-ages show say one negative thing about the show. Discrimination is the unjust or prejudicial treatment of different categories of people, especially on the grounds of ethnicity, age, sex, or disability, and that is what's being asked of the town. Mary Alinsky, we all have our own prejudices and would be foolish not to acknowledge them. We do not, however, have to act on them and perpetuate discrimination. I am trusting that this town will not willfully discriminate against my LGBTQIA family or friends. If a kid is not queer, I can guarantee that going to a drag show won't make them queer. If they are, my prayer is that their family will show them the love and acceptance they need in order to love and accept themselves. And if their family cannot or will not do that, then we should protect them from their family. I ask that the town allow parents to make the decision themselves on what family-friendly activities are appropriate for their own children. And I ask that my neighbors learn to love and accept others the way God encourages to, even when we don't understand or agree with them. Thank you.
Donna O'Daniel, you are up next. You'll be followed by Alice... I'm sorry? Alibrio, okay.
Mayor and city councilors, I subscribe to the biweekly magazine, The New American, which always has a page called "The Goodness of America." Often, it includes a story about an exceptional local police or fire department somewhere in the United States. It could easily do a story about our own exceptional fire department in Cottonwood, which is led by an exceptional leader, Chief Ron Sautman. In the year 2020, it defined its organizational priorities as follows: One, service to our citizens. Two, service to the city organization. Three, service to each other and our peers in public safety. Cottonwood Fire Department prides itself on being the premier fire service provider for all residents of the Upper Verde Valley, which includes Cottonwood, Clarkdale, and all of the Verde villages. In addition to the service that our firefighters provide for full-time residents, the same service is also provided for our tourist population, which is in excess of 500,000 per year traveling throughout the Cottonwood area. Unfortunately, many do not realize how busy Cottonwood Fire Department truly is in response to our community's needs. Every jurisdiction in the Verde Valley has in excess of one or more fire stations, but Cottonwood Fire Department only has one fire station and responds to the same number of incidents per year that other fire departments respond to from two or more fire stations. This number is 3,500-plus incidents per year. The industry standard is to have each station responding to 1,000 to 1,500 calls per station per year. Cottonwood firefighters exceed this number year after year, unlike their peers, which have the luxury of a greater number of stations throughout the Verde Valley. However, the Cottonwood firefighters faithfully continue to meet the needs of our community, for which we are very grateful indeed. We would like to give our firemen some tangible gifts which express in some small manner our thankfulness and appreciation for their unstinting and continuing service to our community. We ask Chief Sautman to distribute these to his firefighters. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Alice Alibrio, you are up next, and you'll be followed by Randy Burdette.
Well, this is pretty unusual for me to come to a city council meeting, but I decided to come because it's a very important subject about the gay pride event. The people are calling it the the drag show. So I'm going to read what I wrote. "Thank you for allowing the gay pride event. I am thankful. Held on April 8th. Proceeds benefiting the local Girl Scout troop. It was a song-and-fun-filled costume party, family-oriented, gathering, honoring LBGQ community members. It was not a sexually deviant affair. There was no harm done to any minors. Anyone not interested was not coerced to attend. It was a choice parents and family made. Everyone has a right to their opinions and beliefs. Separation of church and state is a vital component of a good working democracy. We need to respect those differences. We live in a complex, rapidly changing world. Many children are questioning their sexual identity and need to be accepted for their orientation. More harm is done by forcing, or ignoring, or scolding, or shaming them to conform to something they are not. I have a master's degree in social work. My first employment was in child protective services. Education and experience about what constitutes child abuse is important. This event, again, was not harmful or abusive to children. And a little aside, the Christianity I was taught as a child growing up was inclusive, compassionate, and humanitarian. The Bible recorded Jesus demonstrating..." The Bible recorded Jesus demonstrating loving kindness to all. He did not discriminate against different people. His impeccable example is the ultimate challenge for all of us to emulate. Thank you again for implementing our constitutional rights."
Randy Burdette, you're up next, and you'll be followed by John Mitchell.
I thank the city council for allowing us to speak here today on the issue of adult entertainers dancing for kids for the eighth meeting of call to the public in a row. As we all know, at least I hope we all know, performers whose shows are mostly adult-oriented or all adult-oriented are indeed adult entertainers. Similarly, drag queens/drag shows whose performances are mostly adult-oriented are adult entertainers/adult entertainment. So why are these shows allowed for minors/children? If this is okay, then why not allow strippers to dance for children since they can tone down their dancing as well, even though they are without a doubt adult entertainers? In anticipation of repeated common arguments from those who oppose us, I'll repeat some of what I've written before in past meetings. It's been said that these drag shows are family-friendly, yet Christopher J. Hall, the event organizer, was doing sexual dances like the Spread Eagle, where one lays on their back and spreads their legs as far as they can so as to mimic the sex position in the All Ages Tour in Lake Havasu, Arizona, last February. The only reason he didn't do the same this time, as far as I know, is because he has been telling everyone to tone down the dancing because it's been getting a lot of attention. I don't believe that Chris had a change of heart since the first show in Lake Havasu and the last one, which was in the city. Parents bringing kids to these events doesn't make this sort of thing okay. That is said to be eighteen-plus on the advertisements. To define drag in a very broad way, like many supporters of drag shows for kids, is to render the meaning of drag meaningless. If almost everything is drag, when it comes to men dressing up as women for theater, films, and performances, then drag means nothing at all, much like the reimagining of the term "woman." I hear these All Ages drag shows are about supporting trans and gay rights, the First Amendment, Constitution, equity, which is equality of outcome and requires a centralized economy where the state owns the means of production and all resources, when fully realized and implemented in a society. I also hear that it's for children to learn diversity, to represent eight million genders. Parental rights, that opposition is all about religious views and fear/bullying, et cetera, but including minors and children in shows with adult entertainers has nothing to do with any of that. People have further said that this isn't political. Yet the Verde Valley Democrats have sponsored/supported this past April 8th event. What we oppose as a majority has nothing to do with hate or bigotry and all sorts of accusations, no matter what anyone says. In closing, I implore the city council to add this issue to the agenda and add age restrictions, which isn't a ban for some of those who don't understand the difference, to shows including adult entertainers, at the very least, in city-public buildings or even disallow any sort of event that has adult entertainers for said buildings. Hopefully, we can all have a civil discussion on this together soon. Thank you.
John Mitchell, you're up next. You'll be followed by Kelly Muffet.
Mayor and council, thank you. I want to first say again that I request, like many others, since the recent Arizona Pride Tour performance, I request that it be agendized. You, Mr. Mayor, have taken it upon yourself, apparently, to shut us out and your fellow council members by disallowing this. Also, it's my understanding that, this is as an aside, I guess, I'm just curious. And I know you can't talk. This is convenient that you do this format all the time. It's my understanding that the Cottonwood Police Chief has been placed on leave mid-afternoon last Thursday. I'd like to know why and why the city council members were not notified then, and who made the decision to place him on leave. Shouldn't the leaders of the community be notified of such matters such as this immediately? I mean, I don't get it. What it appears is that it seems to be normal operating procedure for this mayor, who regularly excludes both public and his associates and leadership. Mr. Mayor, I ask again for your resignation.
Kelly Muffet, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Kathy Ransom.
Mayor Linsky, council members, and Mr. City Manager, welcome. I was asked to share something that was actually presented, meant to be presented by Barry Jones tonight, and he was unable to be here. But it's a compliment to Donna O'Daniel's remarks of appreciation for the Fire Department here in Cottonwood. I want to share Barry's remarks with you, and I was told that if I read in the right cadence and without stammering, it will take exactly three minutes. So we'll see how that comes out. So, Mayor and city council members, the Cottonwood Fire Department has a proud tradition of serving the community as an all-hazards response agency achieved through a process of formal education, training, and adaptive response to our community during times of need. It has the most robust public education and community risk reduction program in the Verde Valley, which is achieved with a minimal staff that are continuously exceeding the normal work hours that many other folks enjoy. The community risk reduction team is also responsible for the greater community education that Cottonwood enjoys. This includes supporting the schools and varied community outreach programs, such as Vacation Fire School, reading programs, and Fire Safety for Children. Although, through a formal scheduling process, individual community members may be trained by the Fire Department in CPR, Stop the Bleed, and general first aid programs. Recently, the Fire Department provided CPR training for Mingus Union High School students, numbering over 300, over the course of two days so that they were able to complete the requisite education for graduation. Additionally, Cottonwood Fire Department has been working to provide a greater service to the community through increasing our operational readiness in the category of specialized response, including technical rescue, hazardous materials response, expanding emergency medical services, and tactical law enforcement support. This is achieved with no additional funding, which is enjoyed by many other fire districts throughout the state, and a great personal time expense from our firefighters, who continue to train and attend courses to improve skills and achieve the knowledge necessary to serve our community the way it deserves. We, as Cottonwood residents, are blessed to have a very able and accessible services of our Cottonwood Fire Department, which functions under the very able leadership of our chief, Ron Sawman. We take this opportunity to say all in capital letters, "Thank you for a job continuously well done." Thank you. I know that Ms. O'Daniel provided some healthy snacks back there, and I have some unhealthy snacks to go with those.
All right. Kathy Ransom, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I bring a notebook to these events so that I can take notes about facts that are presented and fact-check them. And what I'm starting to notice is I don't have any facts in these public comments to fact-check. It's all opinion. I did find it really interesting that somebody here who's in support of somehow trying to regulate drag shows was part of the movement for the sanctuary city for the Bill of Rights, for the city of Cottonwood a couple of years ago. I'm not sure that those people actually read the Bill of Rights, because the First Amendment in the Bill of Rights states, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." Now, my religion and my practice are my personal business, and I also feel that it's everyone else's personal business, and it doesn't belong in a city council meeting. I'm sorry that you all have to listen to Bible verses. That gets a little tedious. As adults, we are allowed to make our own moral and ethical choices based on whatever book or whatever teachings we see fit. The idea that we would try to enforce our beliefs, our practices, on anyone else when all we have to do is abstain from those things that we don't agree with is absurd to me. And frankly, that is not treating all citizens or all residents of the United States of America with the respect that they deserve to make their own choices, and we stop being a democracy and start being a theocracy at that point. So I will attend drag shows if I choose to, and I highly recommend that anyone who's opposed to drag shows not attend, and then they don't have to worry about it. I also recommend that they not attend junior high or high school sporting events where they will see cheerleaders doing the splits.
Okay. I'm going to close the floor to the public now. We will move on to unfinished business. First up, we have an interview of Historic Preservation Commission applicant, and I believe Ms. Wilber is coming out to introduce this item. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amanda Wilber, HR Director. I am here this evening to bring back the Historic Preservation Commission interviews. At last meeting, we held interviews for this process, but one applicant was unable to make it. So tonight is a continuation of that last agenda item. So as a refresher, we do have currently two open seats. Yes, I will do my best. We currently have two open seats on the Historic Preservation Commission. We did one interview last week, one tonight, and... I'm sorry, I got thrown off there. Anyways, we've done the blind review process for this specific seat, and I did confirm that the remaining applicant would be here tonight to interview. So unless council has any other questions, we have Ms. Bonnie Bonnet to interview this evening.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Let's get Ms. Bonnet up here then for the interview. And...oh, darn. Is she here this evening with us? Or did she get scared away?
Possibly. She said she would be here, but this is the second time. So I'm not sure if council would like to push it out one more time and try, or if we want to move forward with the applicant that we had.
Did you get confirmation from her that she would be here?
Yep. Yeah. It's been a week, but yes.
Council, what's your pleasure on this?
I'd agree with that, too.
So if we fill with the other gentleman that we interviewed, then do we still have one vacancy?
We would still have one vacancy because this particular vacancy has to be filled... Well, this one can be filled with a non-resident, but we only have one seat for a non-resident currently. The other seat that's open has to be filled by an incorporated city of Cottonwood resident.
Okay. And does Ms. Bonnet fill that requirement?
No, she does not live within the city limits.
Well, I think we need to move on...
And the other person did, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So I think we need to move on, appoint the one applicant, and then open up again and hope that we get a new pool of applicants.
Okay. I will move forward with that.
Do you need a motion then to appoint the other applicant?
We didn't tee it up that way on the agenda, so it will have to come back to the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. That's it for unfinished business. We have a consent agenda up next. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council, will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence. We have three items under consent this evening. First is request for approval of transportation agreement between Verde Valley Caregivers Coalition and the city of Cottonwood on behalf of Cottonwood Area Transit. Second item is request for approval of agreement between Yabapai County and the city of Cottonwood for transportation services. Third item is request for approval of Second Amendment to memorandum of understanding with Yabapai County Community College District to extend term for discounted public transit passes. Is there an item that a council member or citizen would like to have pooled? If not, all motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay. Mayor made the motion, and council member to Willis seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. We move on now to new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, possible legal action. First up, ordinance number 735, zone change for an approximately one-acre portion of an approximately 17.8-acre parcel of land located at 1214 North Main Street, from C1 light commercial to R3 multifamily residential. This is a public hearing, and it is the first reading.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Tina Hayden for community development. I'm bringing a general plan amendment and zone change request for the property at 1214 North Main. I'm bringing a general plan amendment and zone change request for the property at 1214 North Main. The parcel is approximately 17-point acres in size. We are looking to rezone a one-acre portion of that parcel. The majority of the parcel is high-density residential, and its current zoning is R3, which allows up to 29 units per acre. There is a small amount of land, that one-acre portion that is GC, general commercial land use, and has C1 zoning. This does allow R3 permitted uses. The extension of Grissette Ranch Road to the main street is currently in process, and there is no proposed project for design review for this property. It was brought in as a code review that has since dissipated. That is when staff realized that there was dual zoning on the property. This is the land use designation map. This area highlighted in red is that 17.8-acre parcel. The striped area up top where it says GC is that small portion that we are looking to have the zone changed for. This is the zoning map. Again, the area in red is the R3 zoning with the small portion of C1 zoning. And this is where the extension of Grissette Ranch Road will run up to Main. In order to approve a general plan amendment, findings must be made from the general plan to support that. Staff has provided these findings. The first one is in Planning Subcharacter Area 2 regarding Old Town and Parks. This is to encourage pedestrian-oriented development and streetscapes adjacent to Old Town. General Plan Objective 3.1E is to support a variety of residential-type development. And General Plan Objective 3.5B is to support multi-residential and mixed-use development that is within walking distance to Old Town. These are some site photos. This is looking northwest on North Main Street. This is the view looking west on what will be Grissette Ranch Road. Properties to the north. East. This is the one pocket of C1 that will be remaining. Staff has discussed with the property owner the opportunity to rezone to residential because it is a residence on a commercial property. Property owner has not returned to proceed with that. And with that is the end of my presentation. I have this map here for a discussion aid, and I'm ready for any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. Ms. Hayden, council, do we have any questions? No? Okay. Well, this is a public hearing. I believe we've received one form from somebody who would like to speak. Pamela Costello, are you with us? Great. Good evening. Go ahead and step up to the podium and introduce yourself, and you have the floor for three minutes.
Yes. Hello. Good evening. Yeah, my name is Pam Costello, and I have lived and worked in this community for 33 years. And my children went to school here. I did my teaching career at Cottonwood Oak Creek School District, taught at the middle school at CES. So I've seen a lot of changes within this community, and a lot of the development has been good. But I strongly object to the rezoning of this property. been good, but I strongly object to the rezoning of this property. I feel that Gray Fox, back in about 2000, was also asking for rezoning, and from the C1 to the R3, but they were granted the R1, which isn't the high density. And I feel that this project should have no more than the C1, which you see up there, which is Gray Fox area. You know, it should be the same. It should be not granted anything more than that area that was previously changed. There's so much traffic through Old Town right now. I live within walking distance of here, and I have to drive through here every day, my neighbors, everybody else, and it's a traffic nightmare going through. So high density, more people coming in, more traffic, more, you know, use of our roads. You know, the road through here, you know, hasn't been paved since the 1930s through Old Town, and, you know, it's had a couple of, what do you call it, chip seal? But, you know, it's like, we need to have the infrastructure, and I just feel like Old Town, it's at capacity as it is with what's going on there. And there is R3 density out on Willard. You know, developments with that high density can go out there, which is already zoned, R3. You know where I'm talking about?
North Willard?
Yeah, towards Maverick and out that way. That's all R3 zoning.
I see.
So as a member of the community and who's lived here a long time, you know, I think a lot of the development has been very positive, but I don't agree with high-density development in around Old Town area. So anyways, I hope you'll take that into consideration of the traffic and everything else that will be impacted on people who live in the area.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Costello. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. All right, Council, any discussion around this item? Okay, Ms. Hayden, are you -- thank you. The zoning, just to the north of that, that's all manufactured home zoning, is that, that's on the greens, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then do you know the history on the zoning of this particular parcel of R3? How long it's been zoned?
The map from 1983 had that zoned. I don't know anything prior to that.
Okay. And again, the commercial zoning, they would by right be allowed to do residential zoning?
Yes, R3.
Within that, within that commercial zoning parcels, up to R3?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's up to twenty-nine units per acre, and I did do the math. It is up to five hundred and sixteen units, but the topographic features and also being bisected by Grecetta Ranch Road would actually greatly reduce that.
Sure, okay.
How much would it reduce it by, like if they, if it was all the C1?
When we had the code review, the applicant proposed about 146 or 164 units, and that was challenging for them.
One hundred and sixty-four units for the entire seventeen-some-acre parcel?
Yes, for the entire parcel.
Okay. And R3 allows how many acres per unit, how many units per acre again?
Up to twenty-nine units per acre. For this property, five hundred and sixteen units potentially.
I see, okay. Okay. Council, anything? No, it seems, it seems to me that if it's, the bulk of the parcel's already zoned R3, I don't have any heartburn in allowing that small section, one-acre section of C1 to be zoned consistently with the R3. I think it's, it makes it more streamlined for the property owner to figure out how they want to develop that parcel. I certainly understand the concerns over traffic and increased population. We manage it the best we can with private parcels of land that are open to development, and we are finally going to pave that road after nineteen thirty-something.
This is something that is going to work.
And Grecetta Ranch Road will provide a major relief valve to the Old Town corridor, for sure. Much needed.
But there's nothing planned on it right now, correct?
On this parcel, no. 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 Okay, well, if there's nothing else from Council, this is just the first reading, so we'll bring it back in a couple weeks, yep, for a vote. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, I'll have our clerk please read ordinance number 735 by title only.
Ordinance number 735, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning map of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, for an approximately one-acre portion of an approximately seventeen-point-eight-acre parcel of land located at 1214 North Main Street, approximately 200 feet northwest of Kendra Heights Road, APN 406-23-027H, so as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof from the present zoning designation of C1 light commercial to R3 multifamily residential.
Okay, thank you. Item two under new business is resolution number 3174, minor general plan amendment changing the land use designation for a one-acre portion of a seventeen-point-eight-acre parcel of land located at 1214 North Main Street from GC, general commercial, to HR, high-density residential. Ms. Hayden, anything else on this? You just need the resolution voted on?
It's all the same.
Okay, great. Council, any discussion on this item? No? Okay.
I was going to say, I move to approve resolution number 3174.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Carratt made the motion, and Councilmember DeWillis seconded it. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember DeWillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Duvernay?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
And Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Okay, let's have you read resolution number 3174 by title only, please.
Resolution number 3174, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving a minor amendment to the city's general plan, changing the land use designation for approximately one acre of an approximately seventeen-point-eight-acre parcel of land located at 1214 North Main Street, approximately 200 feet northwest of Kendra Heights Road, APN 406-23-027H, from GC, general commercial, to HR, high-density residential.
Okay, thank you. Third item is request for approval to waive planning services fees for the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, Tina Hayden for Community Development. I was recently approached by Carol from the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition. She is looking to modify the existing conditional use permit and add additional beds to serve up to twenty-five individuals for emergency shelter. At this point, she would be required to go to code review and then have a modified fee for planning and zoning commission. That does total $275, so that is what we are requesting as a fee waiver. I did include previous waived fees, including the most recent with the building permit. At this time, with what is being requested with the additional beds, I don't perceive that there would be any additional building permit fees, but that could change as, if the project changes.
Council, any discussion on this?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Before vote, I just have to say I serve on the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition Board. It's unpaid. I don't have any financial ties to this at all, so Mr. Horton always said I was still able to vote. I'm guessing you would agree, okay.
Yes, I agree. You can, yeah, no conflict.
Oh, that's okay. Would you like to make a motion, please?
I move to approve the request to waive planning services fees for the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition in the amount of $275.
I second.
Okay, Councilmember DeWillis made the motion. Councilwoman Duvernay seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember DeWillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Duvernay?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
And Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Great, thank you. Okay, last is a discussion of possible approval to enter into a letter of intent for a sister-city agreement with the town of Mazatlan, Sonora, Mexico.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Rudy Rodriguez, no longer the interim deputy city manager for the City of Cottonwood. On May 3rd, the General Counsel of Mexico, George Mendoza, joined the mayor and myself to talk about promoting projects of collaboration with the town of Mazatlan. This is not Mazatlan, it's Mazatlan in Mexico. And what this basically does is we're looking for a letter of intent to be signed by the mayor so that we can eventually get to the sister-cities agreement where we are able to collaborate, talk about different things, our culture, economic opportunities between the two communities. Currently, I have a letter ready to go if the council wishes to do so. At this point in time, the letter, there is no agreement signed as of yet. This is just a letter of intent, and the first thing, that's one of the first things that needs to get done. Already, the cities already have sister cities. Miami and those. So if council is willing to go ahead and allow the mayor to sign a letter of intent, we'll eventually bring an agreement to the council for developing a sister-city collaboration with Mazatlan, Mexico.
Great. Any questions, Council?
What does it all entail?
So, I'll tell you, I've worked closely with Council Mendoza since I came on as mayor, and he's been up several times to visit me and really trying to build bridges in our community to connect more with Hispanic. We have, as you know, tremendous amount of Hispanic-owned businesses, a lot of history, and so I think he's just trying to support us in any way we can to connect more and celebrate more of our Hispanic culture. And so this program would be kind of a feel-good effort to do that, but I think there's also other things that happen in sister-city programs, different exchanges that can take place.
Especially social and cultural exchanges are the big thing. They match us up with communities that have similar type of backgrounds that we have, not necessarily the population demographics, but same type of, similar populations, similar economic opportunities. It's just an opportunity for us to go ahead and exchange with them, maybe possibly have their mayor come down and visit us over here, and vice versa, just so we can have some cultural exchanges and so we can go ahead and especially spend some time understanding the Hispanic community, especially in our area.
Yeah. And if I could add on to that, Scotty Douglas, city manager. I have experience with sister-city programs in the past as well, and I definitely see opportunities there. It's really kind of an opportunity to expand kind of that view into other communities and how they do things. I've certainly benefited from having exposure to other officials that have visited, and we've had information exchanges and experiential exchanges and things like that. And so, and this, as Mr. Rodriguez had just mentioned, this is a letter of intent. There's no, you know, monetary commitment at this point or anything, and I think that it's worthy of considering. Thank you.
Okay. Prescott's had one in place for a number of years, I think with the city in Sonora, too, I think, right?
I believe so.
Yeah. So it's open to discussion?
Yeah, the whole letter of intent is just to start it, right? Then we'd get more information.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I don't believe there's going to be a cost associated with having a sister-city agreement in place, or at least not a heavy cost.
At this point, there's no cost involved. We're just going to be exchanging socio-demographic information.
Right.
Kind of industries that we have here, kind of industries they have over there, the kind of budget that they have, the different cultures, events that they might have in that area, the wellas events that we have in this area.
Okay.
And then just to add on to that, if there are any financial requirements or requests like that, then staff will certainly return to council for consideration.
Okay. And what's the turnaround to getting the, moving on from letter intent and actually getting the agreement in front of council?
At this point in time, once I get this, I should have, once I get a letter of intent sent out, then I can contact the consulate and figure out exactly what's the next steps, and I'll get back to council on it.
Okay, great. Okay.
Figure out what else is involved.
Okay, great. I'll go ahead then and move to, oh, I'll move to approve that the City of Cottonwood enter into a letter of intent for a sister-city agreement with the town of Mazatlan, Sonora, Mexico.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion. Councilmember DeWillis seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember DeWillis?
Yes.
And Councilmember Duvernay?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
And Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. All right, I'll motion pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Carratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll motion to adjourn.
Second.
DeWillis, Mayor made the motion. DeWillis seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, Council.